I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I'd like the superintendent to introduce our new executive secretary.
It's my pleasure to introduce her, and I apologize, she should have been introduced at the last meeting, she was on the personnel report, but at the end of the table to my right is Ms. Melissa Farrow, who's the new executive assistant to the superintendent's office.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is going to be a presentation by Paul Mazinski, who heads up our robotics program. We'll have to vacate seats so that he can make the presentation, we'll come down there. Paul, so the mics down, please.
Hello, my name is Paul Mazinski, I'm the technology teacher at the high school, and basically I've been teaching CAD, computer-aided drafting design. I've done robotics before when I was teaching in Worcester, that's with the smaller VEX robots, there's an example right there. And I volunteered at the Whitensville Christian School in Northbridge in their robotics program along with a few of my friends and neighbors, and we're involved in US First, that was the big robots, and then again the smaller ones, the VEX. Right here is an example of what I intend to do at the school, basically it's a 10-week program, it ties right in with STEM, and I was going to be going over design blueprint reading and using the CAD system with the kids. I'd like a prerequisite of my CAD 1 before the kids get into robotics. And we'll cover basic electronics, mechanics, hydraulics, pneumatics, and then programming as well. And then for the next several weeks, the kids will be working constructing the robots, the VEX robots, and the last week of the class, I presented a challenge to them where they have to meet that goal. Over here, the VEX, an example of it is if you remember the Gilbert Erector Set, if you're old enough for that, okay? The VEX is just like that, but it's on steroids, and it doesn't come with any instructions, okay? And it really lets you design to the max. Now usually there's contests, there's some over at WPI and then throughout the country as well, and the state, and they set up the contest so that the kids don't know what to build until the contest is opened up to them. And basically, it's, the robot size itself is constrained to a certain size that the contest states, and each year the contest is different. Over on the right over here, you can start to see the playing field that they're standing on, okay? The VEX on the left over there is the program and that the kids will be using, and right there is the controller or the computer in the robot. Now the contest, now, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself, this is going to be a class, okay? And once I generate enough of interest with the kids, hopefully next year, the year after, we should be contest-ready, okay? If we just jump into it the first year, it's going to be a really poor showing, but this way here, I can get the robots introduced to the kids, do a class with it, and then later on, if we do get into the contest mode, it's going to mean more robot kits because those kits would be dedicated to the contest, and we couldn't use the same robot parts and stuff, class time, and then prepare for the contest as well, so just a little heads up there. Just some examples of the kids, you can see the cord between the two controllers, the white shirts and then the black shirts there, so that two people can, on a team, can control a single robot. And basically, one's controlling the motion, forward, reverse, turns and stuff, and the other one's controlling whatever handle, claw, or whatever mechanism that's attached to the robot. Now, the programming part in the contest, and then with my class too, the first part of the contest is autonomous, where the robots move by themselves, they're not controlled by the kids, and basically they have to do certain tasks for extra points in that contest. And then after that portion's over, it goes to remote control, and it's like playing with a remote-controlled car, a plane, or whatever from there. Okay, over here, again, it's just a plan for one of the robots, I've used this one because this is a perfect example of a CAD-type drawing. Now, we do have CAD programs at the school, the latest, it's great, it's from the Autodesk people, and we've got AutoCAD, which is a two-dimensional program, and then Inventor, and that's a three-dimensional program, so that's really a three-dimensional object that can rotate in space, you can have any type of mechanical movement that you design into it, so you can see the gears, mesh, cams, or whatever. So the kids are designing this first before they go and build the actual robot, okay? And again, just a quick sketch, that'd be the old days. Over here is an example of the playing field, and I tried to show that in an earlier slide. The playing field is 10 feet by 10 feet, and it has a outdoor-type carpeting, similar to what we have here, as a base, okay? And it's, to get contest-ready and to, you know, use the class, I gotta build a contest base first. Number one, it protects all the robots that the kids build because they're not going to be squashed by the kids moving around and stuff, and it just keeps the robots and the kids separated. And it also allows us to set up certain tasks for the robots to work. And again, in the contest, the only thing that stays the same from year to year is the 10 by 10 outline, okay, and the carpet base. Anything else in that is changed from year to year for whatever the contest is about. Gear trains, the kids can either design their own, like on the right, or some of them come prepackaged with the kits. Just some more examples of some kits, and these are kind of outrageous because most of the robots end up being fairly small, approximately 10 inches by 10, a 10-inch cube, 10 by 10 by 10. And that's the starting position, they can design anything that fits inside that cube, and once the contest starts, then they can open up their robot by remote control into whatever configuration is there, so it's the packaging there. Again, just another example of the VEX robot. Over here, just some more examples of what can be done, on the right is a climbing mechanism so that, that's not a real mechanism, that's just a design, so that they can get their robot to, you know, climb up or move up, climb up a pole or whatever. The other one's a scissors thing, so you can get a reach for whatever purposes the contest dictates, or in my case with the class, you know, what I tell the kids. Now, usually in the classes here, we try to follow previous contests, you know, their examples of what they want to done, and we'll try to replicate that. And that's the end of the show. Any questions? Oh, one more thing, by the way, the kits that I tend to get for the class, that's a starter kit, okay? To become more competitive in the future, it means buying extra sensors, some of the pieces are expendable, others can be reused left and right, okay? But not to be more competitive, once we do get into competitions, it means getting a whole bunch of different sensors so that the robots can, let's say, follow a painted line, so it's got a vision type of thing, sensing dark and white, I mean, black and white, so it can follow a line, or a proximity switch so that it can recognize when it's about to crash into something, and, you know, a whole bunch of different senses. Any questions?
In your CAD classes, what's enrollment now, like in CAD 1, CAD 2, in your typical...
I've got 26 stations, sometimes I've got that many kids, other times average is 12 to 16 range.
Yeah, and what would you...
They also have me teach in business classes right now, that's Microsoft Word and PowerPoint.
What would you anticipate you'd be looking at for interest with this type of program?
Well, you gotta understand that I'm trying to develop a hook for the kids, to keep the kids here in the town. You guys hired me five years ago to start the shop up again, you guys closed it this year, so I mean, I'm not teaching in the shop anymore, we were doing construction, woodworking, and carpentry. I'm a licensed contractor, so I mean, when I teach carpentry to the kids, I mean, it's top-notch. I'm also a really good CAD teacher, I was the best in Worcester, I've got experience in a whole bunch of different CAD programs, so, and when I first started here, the CAD program that you guys had was AutoCAD 2000, which was, I don't know, 12, 13 years out of date. And I brought the software package from Worcester when they let me go, and basically it was a software package the city wasn't using anymore because they updated. Now, you guys updated the software package, we're running the latest Autodesk, AutoCAD, Inventor, and these programs are the same programs that colleges and industry uses, I mean, it's top-notch.
I think, any other questions from members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodkows.
I'd just like to say, if you get back to what Mr. Hayes says, you'd be starting out, what would you be looking for for a class to start out this robotics?
With the amount of kits that this money would buy into, that would be one class per quarter, and ideally it's two to maybe four kids per kit, leaving one kit for demonstrations rather than, you know, bar and one of the others. But I anticipate at least 16 kids in the class to start, and hopefully, I'd like to see a class every quarter to begin with. And if things go swell next year, you know, we can hopefully build that up some more.
I think, and once it takes off and the kids see what's out there, I think if you get more kids on board, you know, science is an up-and-coming thing, and it has been, but I think this'd be really great. On the carpentry thing, I don't think we was interested, or I didn't know, but that's why we got BayPath to get, you know, education in carpentry from major Z.
Yes, that's true, but we've got a bunch of kids that never went there, and they need something to see what's going on so that they can make that decision. If they don't go to BayPath, there's a bunch of after-high-school programs that will teach them carpentry. It's my job isn't really to teach them, it's to get them interested. And if I can't, if we're not teaching the classes, I really can't get them interested just by talking about it through my CAD classes. Second-year CAD, we cover architecture, and I have the kids build using the 3D Inventor program, model sheds, but they're true-to-scale sheds, I mean, they're built on the computer the same way that you build it in real life. But that only goes so far, I mean, the kids want to be active, they, there's a definite need, a place for some of these kids to, you know, vent energy and just to get excited and interested about school. And just having regular classes, you're really doing a disservice to those kids.
But at the same time, I think that's why we joined BayPath, if a kid wants to be competent or whatever, that's where you get the training, and we're a member, and that's where I get it. But on the CAD classes in robotics, I don't know if they teach that at BayPath, but I think that would be a good start to get them interested at the high school.
Yes, I imagine that they do teach that, that's usually the case with most vocational schools. Now, I have nothing against the vocational schools, they're great. The only downside about that is you're asking a kid in the eighth grade to decide what he wants to do for the future, okay? A lot of the kids at the high school there, we're talking juniors and seniors, don't have a clue what they want to do, okay? It's, and I know for a fact that a lot of kids that do go through a vocational school like that don't end up in their chosen field, they go off and do something else. It's got its place, okay, but so does, basically I'm a shop teacher, industrial arts from the old days, and it isn't just woodworking, building the little clocks and, you know, that type of thing, it's, I've been doing power mechanics, automotive with the kids in other schools, I've gotten heavy into the CAD, originally I started as a drafting teacher back in the old days when I was younger, I've taught electronics, I mean, everything that is in this robotics program there is stuff that STEM insists that you cover.
Well, I just want to say, there's four people I know in South Spencer where I live that went to BayPath and took a plumbing, electrical, and carpentry, and they all worked that trade, so they all work in that trade, so there might be some, but I mean, if a student wants to be, he wants to be a specialist in something, and you're not getting it there, you go on. I mean, I took agriculture in the city of Worcester, and I had to go to North High School because the other schools, but that was a school thing, after that was UMass.
That was at Burnco?
North High.
North High had agriculture?
Yes, they did, that was...
Burnco.
Burnco moved after, they moved up there, since they stopped it now, but the next step was UMass, but it's got to be in your blood, you just don't wake up one day and decide you want to do this, I mean, it's got to be in your blood that you want something that you're not getting here.
Okay.
Not everybody.
We're gonna just move on for a second here, Dr. Crowe?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Bechant for bringing to my attention the fact that he wanted to provide this offering for next year, I think it's a lot of foresight, given the constraints that this district has, because I feel very strongly, and I thank you, Mr. Mazinski, for bringing this forward as well with your description. I've had the privilege of working with Dean Kamen from US First, I've had the privilege of working at MIT in their 270 competition, I've had the privilege of working at WPI as a mathematics instructor for many years and as a science consultant. I think that the most important thing that we can do to prepare our students for the future is in fact do things just like this. And just for the viewing public to make sure that you know what STEM is, it's science, technology, engineering, and math, and now there's a big push for STEAM to throw the arts into the middle of it. This highlights every single 21st century skill that we're trying to instill in our students, it's the higher-order thinking, it's the problem-solving, it's the collaboration, it's the teamwork, it's everything that we're trying to promote that will make them successful no matter what endeavor they go into later on, it's communications, it's everything. So, thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Bechant, for bringing this forward because I think that I wholeheartedly support this, and I know the committee has done so as well.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Any other members have any questions in regards to this? I will thank you again, Paul, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is further discussion on FY '16 preliminary budget. The subcommittee met last night, yesterday afternoon, and we reviewed with the controller a presentation of his custodial services that has to be provided with his oversight as well as the revenue picture and tying that all in. So I'm going to ask Mr. Suda to make the presentation that he made last night to the subcommittee on the custodian piece, and then you have a handout that was given to you by him tonight, and we'll review the big picture on the budget for FY '16, so Mr. Suda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, one of the big issues that I've been dealing with since I started not too long ago is custodial issues within each building, and in some cases it appears that there are some buildings that are larger and older than other buildings in the district, but they have less custodial staff than it appears that they would need to keep those buildings clean and running properly. So, I, since we originally went through the custodial budget, I took a look at what our staffing is currently throughout the district, and basically if we go through this analysis that I did, we have one individual who's a district-wide custodian, he's 40 hours a week, he works 6A to 2P, and we sort of use him equally, or schedule him equally in each of the five school buildings throughout the district. East Brookfield Elementary has a full-time day custodian, a full-time night custodian, and a half-time 3P to 7P custodian. Lake Street School has one full-time custodian during the day and two part-time, two half-time custodians that work 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Wire Village School has two full-time custodians, one day, one night, they have a part-time 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and another part-time 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM custodian. Knox Trail has one full-time custodian and three part-time custodians that are staffed from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And then David Proudie High School, which has probably the most activity of all the schools' after-school activity, has one full-time custodian and two half-time custodians that work 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So I was trying to find a way to take what we currently have in the budget without increasing the budget at all and redeploy those resources based on square footage of the building to kind of come up with a more even deployment of our resources. So I took all the equivalents, so we have the full-time equivalent in the district of all the custodians is 13, and then I started to look at square footage of each building. So the building with the least square footage is East Brookfield Elementary with just under 53,000 square feet. Lake Street School has 58,000 square feet, but it's the oldest building in the district. Wire Village School has 105,000 square feet. Knox Trail has 90,000 square feet, and David Proudie High School, which is the second oldest building, built in 1967, has 98,000, almost 99,000 square feet. So when I did that analysis, it appears, it appears that David Proudie High School, from what I could see, is about one and a quarter full-time equivalents short of what they ought to have to keep that building in check and cleaned based on what happens in that building after school and during school. So what I didn't factor into this is the age of the buildings, because obviously buildings that are older are going to need more attention, sometimes, you know, the boilers and just the nuances throughout those buildings are difficult to maintain, and so I haven't factored that into it, simply based on square footage. So after doing this whole analysis, I guess my proposal, or something to think about, is just redeploying some of our current resources in different, in a different manner, so that East Brookfield, for instance, currently has two and a half full-time equivalents of custodial time, I'm proposing that it really only needs about 1.7, so they would lose about .8 custodians. Lake Street School would lose about, you know, 20% custodian, and then Wire Village would need an additional, some additional hours to get that done because it's such a large school. Knox Trail would need additional hours, but the high school would need the most. And I think it shows, I think in talking with Mr. Bechant, I think it's clear that what he's trying to do there with the staffing that he has is a difficult task to do. So I think initially we had talked about realigning and maybe looking at full-time custodians, but I think if we take what we currently have and we try to just, you know, place them in different areas throughout the district and see how that works, I think we can maybe start to take care of the buildings a little better, and then maybe next year we can look at a different plan as far as maybe if we want to migrate to a more full-time staff. But, you know, in addition to this, we have two custodians that'll be retiring this year, so we have an opportunity to get some new blood into the system and some younger blood into the system, so hopefully that will invigorate things a little bit more as well. So that was just my take on maybe what we can do without adding to the bottom line of the budget, simply taking what we have and using it in a more efficient manner.
I think you make several good points, Mr. Suda, and I think the fact that we have two positions that we'll have to fill by the end of this year, and just to your point, with hopes of maybe getting some younger people in those positions, maybe some people with a broader range of skills that will be able to do other things for us that we don't have the capabilities of doing now, and there also may be an opportunity to look at those people in those new positions and see if there's any ability to be able to have some type of a lead custodian that would be able to work directly under your supervision and carry out tasks so that you don't have to, you know, take on the duties of being the chief custodian on a day-to-day basis. I think the second point is a point that Mr. Cludy has brought up several times, that we really need to start the process of being able to work towards full-time staff. They're going to be more committed, not that there's anything wrong with part-time staff, and they certainly can supplement where necessary, but I think it's imperative that we have some full-time people on staff for those first two big shifts of the day. The question is, the killer is the benefit package and what we have to pay to bring those people on board. So I think as Mr. Suda's suggesting, we may be able to start that process with what's going to happen with these positions that we have to fill, and then keep an eye on working towards improving the system as we go forward for next year. Any other members like to weigh in on this, on what Gary has presented?
I just have a quick question.
Angela?
Yeah, with regard to, in doing this redeployment, does that mean that like each individual school will be responsible for their own, like, groundskeeping, because right now I believe we have like one person really in charge of that? So does that mean we'd have, each school would then have to step up and add that to their list of, like, day-to-day tasks?
Mr. Suda? I think, when I...
I think, when I look at redeploying, I'm really looking at maintaining the building and that sort of thing. I think when we look at the groundskeeping tasks, we have to look at that as well, but I'm not suggesting that we change what we're doing, that we look at the equipment. I mean, one of the things I found is that it appears that the equipment in some of these schools is getting old and difficult to maintain. So, I think we're having a Capitol meeting next week. So, we need to look at what the equipment is, and maybe we have better equipment, but less of it. And we do have a team that can go around and do all the grass cutting during the summer, and we keep a crew that can be responsible for cleaning the buildings during the summer. But during the school year, redeploy the resources, so that they're more appropriate for the size of the school.
To your point, Angela, in the past, we've always had summer help that was comprised of high school students that were graduating, going on to college. And I'm not so sure what happened this year is the best task, to have people that have those custodial skills that have been in the building all year long, to be outside pulling weeds and cutting grass. And, you know, I think these are the things that we can continue with the FAMA program of giving some employment to some of our graduates that are moving on as summer jobs, and let our experienced staff focus on what needs to be taken care of inside the building. So, that's something for us to look at as well.
Right. I guess just two things, then, would be the plowing, and then also the fields at the high school. That's a big task. I mean, in the fall and in the spring, keeping those lines and everything has to, that's something that you have to be, you know, cutting all the time. And so, I guess that would be the only thing. I don't know if that would mean additional, a little additional time at the high school, or just understanding that there should be some need to cushion that into each schools.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, if not, do you want to move on to the budget presentation?
So, what I've given you tonight is a preliminary calculation of what we anticipate the assessments to the communities to look like, based on the expenditure budget that was approved by both the subcommittee and the full committee, the full committee last week. And I can't stress enough that the revenue numbers that we're basing these calculations on are level-funded from the current year that we're in. We have no idea what the governor's gonna do yet. His numbers aren't expected to be out until sometime in the end of next week, or the beginning of the following week. So, it's unpredictable, at this point, to know where his funding is gonna go. The fact that he cut a kindergarten grant that we have in the current fiscal year, when we're almost, you know, more than halfway through the year, isn't a good indication that we can expect more money next year. But at this point, we're gonna start our calculation with a level funding of Chapter 70, 71, and charter school reimbursement money. So, those revenue numbers, the total state revenue numbers that we're anticipating are the same as the current fiscal year, which is $13,892,285. District revenue, same thing. We get reimbursement for Medicaid and investment income, so that totals $100,000. And then the budget that we voted, that we approved, is $24,752,942. So, I took that budget, and I based it on last year's apportionment numbers. So, those haven't changed, and I imagine they will, but they probably won't change as much as the state revenue numbers will change. So, based on the operating budget that we approved, and the level funding of the state aid, it looks like, at this point, that the assessment revenue that we can expect, or that would, the bill that we would send to the two communities, East Brookfield would see a 9% increase in their operating budget. It would go from $1,446,858 to $1,578,463. The transportation budget would increase by 4.98%. Go from $257,900 to $270,748. And their debt assessment would increase a small percentage from $263,820 to $264,790, for a total preliminary estimated assessment of $2,114,001. Spencer has similar increases in their budget and their operating assessment, and their total assessment. Their operating assessment will go from $6,588,022 to $7,182,310, which is a 9.02% increase. Their transportation assessment will increase the same percentage as East Brookfield, but it'll go from $1,169,16 to $1,218,752. And their debt assessment actually goes down from $252,394 to $245,394, for a total assessment of $8,646,456. So, again, these are extremely preliminary numbers. I'm sure they're gonna change multiple times before we get to the final hearing on the budget, based on what the governor presents to the state in the next week or two. And I'm sure we'll have to go back to subcommittee and take a look at the bottom line, and some of the initiatives that the superintendent has put forth in the budget, and see, and start to prioritize if all of that can stay in. But as it stands now, it's our best guess at what we think may shake out.
I think it's important for the board and for the community to understand what Mr. Suda alluded to, is that the revenue side has been level-funded. But we have not level-funded the budget of what we're asking for. The budget that the committee is putting forward is what has been generated through the administrators, to the superintendent, to the subcommittee, and to the school committee. And that budget is what our people that are working for us are saying they need to have, in order to deliver the services to the children. And one side of the coin this board has taken is told administrators, we want to move forward and move the level of our schools up. But the other side of that is, we've got to give them the tools to do that. And that's what we're trying to do with this budget that we're presenting. As Mr. Suda said, it's strictly preliminary. We have to wait and see what the final numbers are. But we're bringing forward what we're being told is needed, in order for the superintendent and the administrators to move the district forward. Gary?
Yep. So, I mean, I don't think we want to go back through the line items of the budget, but that's, you know, I provided you in the second page of that, was just a recap by school of the budget totals that were approved in the prior meetings of the school committee and the subcommittee. So, that's where we stand tonight. If anybody has any particular questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any members have any questions or comments in regards to what Mr. Suda has presented? If not, we'll move on to the Capitol.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludier.
Just a question and a point. Do we intend to vote this preliminary budget this evening?
Yes, we do. We do have to vote this budget tonight. I thought what we might do is just quickly go over the Capitol request-
That's fine.
-and let folks know what's going on, and then they'll have the whole picture in there.
Okay.
Go through that. So, when the budget subcommittee met, it was decided that even though each building principal provided their Capitol request to the committee, or the subcommittee, it was decided that the better route to take was to form a Capitol Subcommittee, and to take each of these items under consideration in a separate process. So, what I've done is, I've just listed what each building principal has brought forward. Some have numbers attached to them, and some do not. And I'll just read them off, so you can understand. So, East Brookfield Elementary School, they have a need to rebuild the boiler, and for a security system upgrade, and we didn't have any estimates on either of those. Lake Street School needs repairs or replacement of the roof, repair and/or replace the boilers, network and technology upgrades. The network and technology upgrades are estimated to be $200,000. The other two items, we don't have any estimates yet. Wire Village Schools, HVAC upgrade or improvement, upgrades to the main server and technology room. We've experienced problems with it this year. There's needs to fix the plumbing in the kitchen, and there's a national grid audit completed. There were no estimates on those. Knox Trail Junior High, same thing. HVAC upgrade, approximately $20,000. They need to replace the carpet in the library, $9,000. Security upgrades, estimated at $2,900. A tractor with a snowblower attachment, $17,000. A lawnmower with a bagger attachment, $14,000. And then classroom gaskets and the heaters, and at some point, repave the driveway. David Proudie High School, they also need security system upgrades, that they're estimating at approximately $5,000. The B-building roof needs to be repaired or probably replaced at a cost of an estimate of $200,000. There are still seats in the auditorium that need replacing. They need a new intercom system. They proposed to sandblast and refinish lockers in the boys' locker room. There's a hot water tank that's no longer being used, but needs to be removed. Blinds in the lower, the first-floor classroom need to be either fixed or replaced or installed, and repairs to the girls' locker room showers. And then lastly, the technology department has proposed voice-over IP and paging upgrades of $250,000, security system upgrades, which are district-wide. So, some of the other ones that I've already mentioned, those would be included in this[1260.21][1260.23]$60,000 number, and a Cisco mobile device manager of $100,000. So, of the amounts that we have listed here, that we have estimates for, it's probably $850,000 worth of Capitol requests. And there are other items on here that don't have amounts attached to them, so I think it's safe to say that we would be well over $1 million Capitol needs if we were to go forward on these items. And it's becoming clear that the boilers in the HVAC in a lot of these schools, there are things, you know, they need to be rebuilt after so many years. And I'm hearing that it's somewhere between seven and 10 years, and they're all beyond that point, so they probably need to be addressed soon. And the roof repairs, there's a lot of need in the district for Capitol improvement, and I think it's a good idea to get a committee to take a look at it, prioritize it, and then find a way to go forward and fund it on a prioritized basis.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Just a couple of points to pick up on with what Gary had to say. The superintendent has filed a statement of interest for some grants that were available for window, door replacement, boiler replacement, roof repair. We have two schools, the high school in Lake Street that fall into the age category. The others are questionable. Knox Trail may be on the borderline. But some members had brought that up to us, and the superintendent had already been on that, and had already filed that statement of interest. Of all the Capitol items that we have, the only one that the subcommittee agreed to bring forward was the one in regards to security, and the superintendent and comptroller are gonna work on having some professionals come in, and be able to give us an idea where we need to go with that. But that discussion will take place in executive session. In regards to the point of having the Capitol Subcommittee, I had asked at the last meeting, anyone that was interested. I have had three members that have contacted me. I will appoint them tonight. It will be Mike Ethia, Angela Napkin, and Kurt Nodquist. And Mike Ethia will chair that committee. They intend to have their first meeting this coming Monday at 4:00. It's a public meeting. It will be posted, and it will be held in the library. And then they will go forward, along with the comptroller, who will be there as well to work with them through the Capitol process. Any members have any questions or comments that they'd like to make in regards to the Capitol presentation?
I have one quick question.
Angela?
Because I'm not seeing it. I just want to know which category we want to throw it into, because I do feel like it's something that we do need to look at investing, at least for the future. And that's that POS, the point-of-sale system, that the cafeteria that Robin Sundquist suggested.
Right.
It's not in our budget, and I understand that, because we don't even know the numbers yet. But I feel like it needs to be on one list or the other. So, if it's not in our budget for the preliminary assessment, then I feel like we do need to put that on the Capitol.
You're right. It should be on the Capitol list. Right. I overlooked that.
All right, so we'll get that added to the Capitol list. Mr. Cludier?
It was my understanding, just to follow up on that point, that there was money in the food service account to actually fund that for the first year. Did I miss that? Or is that accurate?
That was my understanding. Superintendent Crowe, do you have anything you can share with us?
That's what Robin indicated, is that there was money for the first year to fund that.
Yeah.
As a pilot.
Right.
To pilot it in one school.
Okay. So, that's fine. I just, that's great. If it's already gonna be kind of worked out-
I thought that's what we were doing, because I think we were all in pretty much support of that, and we felt that it was the right thing to do, to get it going this year. We, you know, not gonna jump in all at once and get it going in every building, but we get it going in one building, and if it works out, we can move forward with it.
That was my understanding. We were gonna do it as a pilot program and start at the high school.
My other point was, one thing that I overlooked when we were going through this Capitol, was under Wire Village, the upgrade to the main server room. That's slipped through the cracks, so to speak. I didn't speak on that. We really need to address that. I really don't think, with the infrastructure that we've already put into technology within the district, I don't want to see us paying for things twice. I think we need to address that. Now, that may be another item. You know, I did take the time to go with Mr. Torry and take a look at that room, and I think if we get the right technician in there, and I think Mike actually has seen the room as well, get the right technician in there, I think this is a relatively simple fix that can be had. And I think that we shouldn't put that off. And we may even decide that, as a committee, that we want to transfer funds within our budget this year to handle that, as opposed to doing it some other way. Just that one room.
Yeah.
You know, we spend money. We put infrastructure in there. We can't let it go for naught. So, I just don't want to lose sight of that as well.
That's a good point, and perhaps in the upcoming weeks, we can ask the comptroller to look at some various line items and see, once we have some ideas of the cost, if there's any monies available, that could be transferred to-
I mean, I realize we're ways away from June 30th. I get that, you know, and, but I just think that that's an avenue.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions or comments in regards to the presentation? All right, if not, then the chair is gonna act for a motion to approve a preliminary budget of $24,752,942. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Angela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather. Any further questions or discussions on a roll call vote? Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Parrot?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next item of business is some votes that have to be taken in regards to the Unit C contract. I will vacate and recuse myself from that vote, because of having a relative that works in the system in that unit. And I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Cludier, and you can continue and do the adjournment from there, Mr. Cludier.
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, two things I'd like to bring up. Just as a member of the budget Subcommittee, I'd like to thank the entire board. This was a unanimous budget vote that we just took tonight. I think it really shows that this board is working diligently to move this district forward. We've invested, you know, almost $1 million of additional funds this year for new programs, for different programs, to enhance the programs that we currently have. And, you know, I just think we're moving in the right direction, and I certainly hope that the public can see that, and that there is a need here, and that this wasn't a split vote, it was a unanimous vote in support of this. So, I just, as one member of the Subcommittee, I just want to thank the board members for their support in this. Mr. Chairman, before we go to Unit C, the rule of necessity, as you're well aware of, we're a seven-member board. If the folks that need to recuse themselves from this next vote on Unit C, yourself, Mr. Ethia, Ms. Messier, it's gonna leave three members of this board. We're a seven-member board.
Yeah. I think I'll be the only one that'll have to recuse myself.
Unit C, we're okay.
I think Mike will be okay for Unit C, and Heather-
It's Unit A.
Heather will as well.
Okay.
I think I'll be the only one.
Then that's fine. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're covered with the vote. Okay? I thought it was, I thought it was all three. Okay.
All right, then I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Cludier.
Okay, so the negotiation team successfully negotiated a contract with Unit C, and we've actually discussed this at previous meetings. And at this time, it's, the board needs to, we'll entertain a couple of different motions. Angela, if you would make the correct motions as presented by legal counsel, so that we can ratify this and get this contract completed.
I move to ratify the one-year memorandum of agreement between school district and Unit C for the period of 2014 to 2015 as attached, and the three-year memorandum of agreement between the school district and Unit C for the period of 2015 to 2018 as attached. attached.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. On a roll call vote, Mr. Nordquist?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Mr. Ethia?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous.
Motion to appropriate from the account of 10000.2210.9.06.101.00, to implement the payment of a one-time signing bonus of $175 to all Unit C bargaining unit members on the active payroll as of the date of the ratification of the 2014 to 2015 memorandum of agreement between the school district and Unit C.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any questions on the motion? On a roll call vote, Mr. Nordquist?
Aye.
Ms. Napkin?
Aye.
Mr. Ethia?
Aye.
Ms. Messia?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Thank you.